I was waiting on you.
Did everybody sign in?
Yeah, we made an announcement about it.
Yeah, I know.
Oh. And I gave you the first sheet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you ready, Betty? All right, we'll call the commission order. We've got a packed agenda and lots of folks here, so we're going to move as expeditiously as possible. Are there any minutes or reports, Betty? Commissioner Committee liaison reports or announcements of upcoming meetings and/or events. Silence reigns the day, I love it.
I'm going to mic this weekend.
You had to ruin it.
Chamber of Connections tomorrow night.
You're not helping any.
Inside business, no, that's a board meeting.
All right.
You can keep going, I've got all day.
First item on the agenda is update from the Capital Region. Ed, if you would like to introduce the folks you brought with you, and you might just grab a microphone here real quick. We're live.
All right.
And then we'll turn it over and you guys can make your presentation. Ed?
Ed Farnsworth with Capital Region Medical Center, Sam Bushman, who's on our board and Chair of our Building Committee, Roger Schwartz, who's on our Building Committee, Tom Carr, also on our Building Committee, and Jim Wish, who's Vice Chair of the Board and on our Building Committee, and then Jack Platts, who is Chair of our Board, Martin Grabansky, who is Director of Facilities and has the presentation on the expansion.
Sounded good to me.
Did it?
Martin, I do have to ask you to take a microphone, I apologize for that, but since we do record our meetings now...
I may need a third hand.
If you need help, let us know.
All right. Well, good morning and thank you very much for the opportunity to present today. I'll try to go through this as quick as possible, I know you have a busy agenda, and this is a little bit about Capital Region's expansion. Some of our goals: we conduct a master facilities planning, strategic business development, enhancing our outpatient and providing quality service, improving some of our facility appearances. We want to ease some of the access issues on the site, we want to efficiently use our resources, and we want to enhance economic opportunity in the area. We want to recruit specialty physicians, specialty staff. We want to partner with the city and the county, and we want to give as many opportunities to local businesses as possible during this development. We're very active in the community, very dedicated to community. In the last five years, we've invested 43 million in expansion projects, over 400 million, and we employ 1,400 employees, we're one of the largest employers in Jefferson City. We provide a lot of care to Medicare, more so than we get reimbursed. We see with the changes coming in the Affordable Care Act that more and more is going to be developing healthy choices, promoting healthy choices, and we are looking to expand our services to meet those challenges of the future, and we are proposing a $35 million expansion. We're on the move, we're working with the city to support some of the changes on our campus, demolishing Doctor's Park, and we're looking at the new looks for healthcare in the future. Here's some of the items that we're looking at on the site. You'll see that we're requesting intersection here at Stadium, create two-way traffic on Monroe, close this entrance here off Stadium. It's very dangerous, there's a lot of traffic in the morning, that's our second busiest entrance. We're looking to obviously develop on Wood Lawn and Attorney Lane off of Madison. This is just a little fun, a little look at the old Doctor's Park that sat to the north of the campus. We just recently did the demolition on this site, going, going, and gone, and this is what the site looks like today, so we are prepped and ready for action. This is an overview of how the site may look. We're working on this site as we speak, but this is the latest and greatest, we're getting a lot of positive comments on this one. We're looking at parking below the building, take advantages of some of the great elevations there. We're looking at pod layouts, and this is just a look at how we'll lay out the physician, so it's color-coded for different physician packages. We are looking at three levels, and we're looking at obviously some growth potential, so we have some shell-in space as well. This would go all the way to the third floor and give us a connector into the main hospital. This is how we envision the campus looking off of Madison. Just a couple different views. You'll notice that we have a viewing area out here to the front, great view of the Capitol. We'd like to take advantage of that, we've got an excellent view up there. Again, these are just some artist renderings of what we envision the campus looking like. Here's a view on the inside. This would be the main elevator coming up from the street. We would have reception areas, pharmacy, gift shop, coffee shop at the main entrance as you come in. This is looking back from outpatient. This is a little look from the third-floor mezzanine over the entranceway. Capital Region's commitment: we're committed to providing the very best healthcare to our community. We're committed to expanding and promoting business-friendly approach to the families and local businesses who work with Capital Region, and we're committed to working with our local contractors wherever possible. We're not just saying that, we're putting it in the verbiage of our contract. Our commitment is to the community we serve, and in our verbiage in our contract, we state that. Our construction managers, we're required of them to utilize as much local business as humanly possible, wherever possible, and we put that in the terms of the agreement. What do you look for? In the future of healthcare, we want to provide what the community is looking for. Continuing to make well-being and healthcare our most important goal. We lead in the direction of the future of healthcare. Our HealthPlexes, our Center for Mental Wellness, Diabetes Education, or just a few of the services we provide to keep you healthy and going strong. The future is preventive medicine and healthcare. Also, we're looking at the future, the new campus expansion is a state-of-the-art outpatient treatment center, designed to better serve you. You know, some healthcare facilities are designed to keep you in them. What we're doing here at Capital Region Medical Center is for the future of healthcare. We're designing our facility to keep you healthy and out of the hospital, and we will continue our goals to provide exceptional healthcare to the patients we serve in mid-Missouri. We could use your help, wherever there's financial assistance available for expansion, be it expediting the stadium intersection or the two-way traffic on Monroe, possibly beautification, you know, we're doing a lot of work, we've spent a lot of money to increase that campus and that entrance, possibly coming off of 54, there's a Big Rock Bluff kind of hard to look at, maybe we could look at beautifying that, some of the utility relocations off of the two-way traffic, and Wood Lawn would really be appreciated. With that said, here's our goals. Comments or questions?
If you go back to the last screen real quick. Where are we at on some of these particular items? When would the timing be on utility relocation?
We are looking for this project to be completed April of 2015.
So when would you need the utility relocations?
We would like to see that, the Wood Lawn stuff, we'd like to see that as early as possible. We'd like to see the expansion of Stadium prior to the opening of the hospital, the sooner the better, quite frankly. It would help with the construction and development as well.
Matt, hate to put you on the spot, is that possible?
Well, you know, we have our agreement that we would definitely provide the two-way traffic on Monroe, which would force us really to do an intersection at Stadium with Monroe by the end of summer 2015. And that would include the relocation of utilities along Monroe, that'd just be part of the project, those are the right of way down.
And that's a joint project, we've talked about, and so we will be going in on that as part of the project, anyway.
We, just to refresh everybody's memory, that's the city, can't, we started calling Jefferson Stadium, but it really is the whole interchange, and then when the hospital came along, we were really focused on Christie, but when they came along, that intersection kind of moved down to Monroe, or maybe included both, you can't really do one without the other. And so, we've been working with Eric and Larry too, and talking about that, and we've got some CAMPO funding now lined up for that, $787,000 in grant money, I believe, besides our local inputs. And then, anyway, we just met yesterday, we just like to consult GBA, and the traffic and some of the design, and CMPS is subbed to them. So we met with them yesterday trying to get our scope started and everything, get this traffic study going, so we can actually determine what has to be built there, that's the first phase. And so we're hammering on that, getting that out. But yeah, I think you said April, that would be a little quick, I think, our end, I don't know, try, but I wouldn't want to, I think the end of summer '15 is reasonable, and I think that's when your project was trying to open up.
Anyway, we can expedite it, we should look at doing what we can do to help you do that.
And it could, it's a phased project, we may, you know, we're focused, I told you to consult yesterday, we're focused on that Monroe Stadium area, Phase One at least, and depending on timing of schools too, you know, we only have a window there, and we really do all of that, everything we're going to do there in one phase, or it's going to have to be two phases. So we may have to come back the following summer even and do another project, the Phase Two, even though it'd be planned altogether, but might have to break it phases just for secret team of schools and every other thing along.
Those are my questions, any? Chris, Jeff?
Who's getting the best office? Is that you, Ed?
The doctors!
Yeah, the doctors definitely, you know, we're going to really try to position that building, we have a beautiful, beautiful Capitol, we're going to take advantage of that.
Well, and I'm particularly happy to see you guys having that emphasis on local businesses. You know, we did that, we built our jail, we really focused on local businesses. I wish all of our economic development partners did the same, but I'm really pleased that you all are doing that, and, you know, we want to be a resource to help you all, this is a great project for the community. I mean, it's great for your hospital, but it's really great for the whole community.
It really is.
And you guys do a great job, and you've been good team partners over the years, and we continue to want to work with you all as we go forward.
Thank you, we very much appreciate it.
We all are in on the talks about the stadium Jefferson interchange, so that's where we need probably the most input. We're looking into the future on how to do that interchange, Eric, because it's a mess the way it is.
And Larry, anything we can do to accelerate that project? Eric, Larry? Matt? Mike? You didn't think you'd get away without me at least mentioning you, did you? You know, if there are ways we can accelerate that program, we should do that.
We certainly appreciate your pass, support, your comments today, your interest in everything we're doing, thank you very much.
Thank you all, and thanks for the update, we should appreciate it. Look forward to the groundbreaking, look forward to the ribbon-cutting. It's an exciting project. Thank you all very much.
Coming over, asked me to draw the dozer when they got the stuff being tore down.
Because they all saw your One Call commercial.
I should still be getting royalties from that. That's good acting. Did Wish say they're still having?
Yes, we're going to try talking about that.
Should I have to follow that?
Yeah. Well, while you're setting up, would you mind if we jump ahead a couple items?
No, go ahead.
Okay, let's do the Public Safety Grant real quick. Look out Debbie, you're in the way.
This is the LETPA, and it's really a ministerial function. We're the county that hosts the state, and it's the law enforcement terrorism prevention grant, and requires your signature.
That means I need a copy of it so I can sign it. This is the same grant we did last year, it's just in the second year of it, right?
It's the second year of it. There's actually three copies there, so I can take one original back, and you all can have two originals.
Okay. Well, unless you all have an objection or any questions?
No.
I would entertain a motion to approve the Homeland Security Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Activity Working Group grant. Second.
It was LETPA.
I have motion second, would you call roll, please?
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, by roll call vote, it's approved, let's say 16th, right?
It is.
Do you just want to do his?
And then would you do the data conversion real quick? I think then we can jump in.
The data conversion, John had mentioned that was part of it, we didn't have the number, we have many capital projects to cover it, that's in our switch to Huber to Interpol from New World, and that really severs the tide effective November 1.
Okay, do you need anything from us?
Signature.
On what?
The agreement to pay them when they convert the data.
We have already got this budgeted, and it's inside the budget numbers as I recall, right?
Yes.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve the contract with Huber and Associates for data conversion.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, by roll call vote, approved, 16th October. And you may have to take these to get the clerk to stamp it, because as you know, without the clerk's stamp...
Doesn't count.
Doesn't count. Here you go. Thank you!
Thanks. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Can you please leave a copy on my desk, Greg?
Yeah, I'm going to leave two copies for you all.
Thank you.
That's sealed.
We have a problem?
Yeah, we're just going to move forward with the announcement, you guys have handouts, and then I'll...
We have them, we work off the slides.
I'll speak loudly, and if I'm not loud enough, I'll grab a microphone. Good morning, I'm Ashley Barnard from Central Missouri Community Action, I'll make sure you all have handouts in case you...
And you do need to use a microphone, not because we can't hear you, but because it's recorded and therefore the microphone is necessary.
I noticed that online, that this is all tape, I'm like, what?
I want to just get more like this, and set them on the table. I'm good with that. Those are not very good ones, these are more likely to get errors.
I thought they were just loud.
Everybody's laughing.
Just go, don't worry about it. If it doesn't work, it's technical problems, and we don't care about it. There's no speakers in here, you're just recording on the internet.
Okay, so should I pretend to hold it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good morning, I'm the community organizer for Cole County and Montauk County, like I said, I work for Central Missouri Community Action, and I had just contacted the commissioners just to not only put a face to a name, but kind of share with you what my position is here in the county, and then I do want to go over some local information in regards to Cole County, and it's kind of an educational piece, too. Central Missouri Community Action, you'll see right there on your handouts, changes people's lives and bodies, the spirit of hope improves communities and makes America a better place to live. We care about the entire community, we're dedicated to helping people help each other and themselves. History of Community Action, next year, 2014, is the 50th year of Community Action. President Johnson signed the Economic Opportunity Act in 1964, he declared a war on poverty at that point. On page three, you'll see a slide where it talks about percent of population in poverty. These numbers are coming from the 2009 census, and you're going to see Missouri, the majority is that light orange color, which is 14.3% to 24.9% of poverty, okay? According to the U.S. Census Bureau, 50 million Americans live in the state of poverty, hunger, and hardship. That's more than last year, that's more than ever before in our nation's history. We're not winning the war. Turning the page, did you know, do you know the face of poverty? Do you know the face of poverty locally? 64% of people living in poverty work full-time. So what does that say about the jobs that they're doing? Two-thirds of all poor adults are women, and it's 1 in 5 children live in poverty. So that is the face of poverty today. These are adults that are elderly and disabled, these are veterans that are coming home that have disabilities, these are single mothers, single fathers, okay? These are people that have experienced natural disasters, these are people that have experienced generational poverty. There's a lot of reasons why people live in poverty. There are a few myths out there, one, you know, that it results from a lack of responsibility, some stereotypes out there, you walk into Walmart and you see walking stereotypes necessarily. Poverty really results from low wages and inadequate benefits. You walk into, minimum wage right now is $7.35, you know, that's not very much, it's not a living wage, and we're going to talk about what a living wage is. Poverty is a big-city problem, not necessarily the case, poverty is all over in rural areas. And then, this is one of the biggest myths, I believe, and that a large proportion of taxpayer dollars supports welfare recipients. In all reality, it's less than 1% of our national federal budget.
That includes Medicaid?
Food stamps.
Because Medicaid's 30% of the federal budget in that itself.
No, it doesn't, I don't think it includes Medicaid, I think it's just food stamps and TANF.
So it doesn't include the bigger?
I'm not 100% on...
The bigger social programs, SSDI, et cetera.
No, this is specifically welfare, which is TANF.
Just the little sliver that's...
Yes, yep. And then, real quickly, the vision for our families, vision for our community from the agency's perspective, we want families to live extraordinarily in decency and in dignity. Our community, we want it to be a thriving, safe place to embrace all individuals, providing growth. Our vision for our agency is to be a recognized leader in ending poverty and building strong communities, with all of your help, of course. CMCA's mission, to empower individuals and families to achieve self-reliance. My job in the last four years was case management, working with folks in poverty to remove barriers, and that's exactly what we're trying to do, is move people towards self-sufficiency, okay? Five strategic commitments there from CMCA as an agency to engage the community to have their basic needs met. Basic needs, food, shelter, medical expenses, some education. Enhance community capacity to ensure all individuals have lifelong learning opportunities. To enhance economic and community assets, build relationships across class and race lines, and develop an innovative, caring agency dedicated to being an influential leader in our community. So real quickly, the real interesting piece of what I wanted to share with you today is the meat of what I want to kind of go over. On page eight, it talks about poverty guidelines, and I want to make sure that folks understand what poverty, what the measurement is, what the guideline is. So for a family of four, I have it highlighted there, I am married and I have two very small children, so I'm that family of four, and annually, if I make $23,550 or less, that means I meet the 100% of the federal poverty level, okay? Monthly, that breaks down to about $1,900 a month for a family of four. And then you can see how it will go up per family member. 12.3% is the poverty rate currently, from the most current numbers we have was released in December of 2012, which is up from 10.2% in Cole County back in, is it 2000? Cole County stats on the following page, 45% of students participate in the free and reduced lunch program right here in Cole County.
It doesn't include private schools, though, does it?
No, not parochial. 1,292 people is an average monthly amount of people that are receiving TANF. TANF is Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, that is the new and approved name for welfare, okay? And I will tell you the average amount of money that they receive is $292 a month. A lot of people that can't even make their car payments, but they're expected to live on that for an entire month. Average SNAP recipients in a monthly, here in Cole County, okay, is 3,989. SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Plan, that's food stamps, okay? And unemployment rate, the last figures we have is from July, and that's 5.9% right here in Cole County. In Cole County, the wage for a family to meet their basic needs, food, shelter, clothing, and medical expenses, is equal to about $16.59 an hour. That is what is considered a living wage, okay? I'm going to stand here and tell you that I don't even make $16.59 an hour, so technically I don't even make a living wage working for Community Action Agency here in Cole County. And to me, that's very powerful, you know, I can't, I wouldn't be able to do it as a single mother of two children, but, you know, luckily my husband's employed and we have two incomes in our home, okay? The two graphs on the following pages, I just want to talk about briefly, I said the living wage is $16.59, that's that blue, that blue cone, or whatever you would like to call it. The median income in Cole County is that red, and it's $26.72, which is quite high, but if you consider, we have the capital here, that actually makes a whole lot of sense, depending upon those folks that are making very high incomes locally here in the community. The per capita income, which is your individual average, is $12.80, okay? So if your per capita income is $12.80...
That's spread across children, retired people, so it's not per capita working, it's just everybody.
Yes.
So if you're a family of four, theoretically, you're making, what'd you say it was, $12?
$12.80 per capita.
Theoretically, a family of four is making $48 an hour, because you've got two kids that, say they're two and four, they're working, obviously they're not.
Well, they're not, but at the same time, you can only take, usually in a family of four, you'd only take two adults, any household, you'd only take two adults.
Okay, but the per capita numbers across everyone.
I'm going to double-check that, Mark, and I'm going to get back to you, because...
It's the 75,000, or 75,000 population number.
My point really is being that, you know, per capita income isn't even, doesn't even meet our minimum wage at 7.35, and of course, you and I can't, sitting here today, can't change that, it's just a matter of education and information. And the graph below there, out of the population that CMCA serves, okay, that's what this graph is based on, is specifically 86% of those folks are below 100% of the federal poverty level, and like I mentioned before, that's $1,900 a month, or what did I say? That was $23,000 a year.
How many people do you serve?
I can't, I was waiting, I'm actually waiting on the numbers for the last, for 2012.
Ballpark?
I believe it was 60-some thousand, 60-some thousand-odd amount over, not yearly, in the last year, because you have, within CMCA, we have energy assistance, we have multiple, we have different, we have multiple programs.
So if somebody comes in and hits three or four programs, that counts as three or four different contracts, okay?
So if that gives a better idea, it doesn't have it all broken down, we have a system, and if you'd like those numbers, I can get them for you, but I didn't bring those today.
Thank you.
12% of the folks that we serve are between 150% to 200% of the federal poverty level. And to give you an idea of what that is for a family of four, 150% is monthly, 2,900, 200% is 3,900, so those are the folks that we're serving within that income. And then 2% has zero income, and then, this actually, this less than 200% is an error, it should be greater than, because we don't serve anybody greater than 200% of the federal poverty level, okay? In Cole County, there are two Head Start Centers, there's one Family Resource Center, and that's where I'm housed out of, that's where I work, and that's over on Southwest now, and then there's 29 employees, and those employees work not only at the Head Start, CMCA takes care of Head Start, the Head Start program's from birth to five, we've got Foster Grandparents Program, utility assistance, which we've just received some federal funding for, and what am I missing? What am I missing? Weatherization, okay? To give you an idea of how much money Cole County, and Cole County was spent by CMCA, invested in Cole County, was over $2 million, almost $3 million in last, in this fiscal year, 2013, which just ended in the end of September. I mentioned Head Start, energy assistance, community organizing, that's me, I'm the face of that here in Cole County and Montauk County. Section eight, that's what I'm missing, section eight, your HUD housing, we do vouchers, it's a voucher system. Family development, so different classes for stepping up to leadership, getting head classes, things like that. The weatherization for folks necessarily in any housing unit to be more energy efficient. Individual asset development, poverty stimulations, are you very, very unique, I'd love to do that for the city. And then the Work Assistant Program is employment and training, so. What other questions do you have, and what information, Mark, should I send you, because...
I mean, I'd like to get some more of the data we just talked about.
Yeah.
I'd also like to know, you talked about the cycle of poverty a little bit, what is Community Action's role in, it seems to me that poverty doesn't fall, come from low wages, what was it you said?
Do you believe in the myth?
Low wages and inadequate benefits, it comes from poor education.
There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle.
So, because I think the statistics clearly show that the higher your education level, dramatically the drop-off is from poverty. So what role does CMCA take in fostering and encouraging education, particularly persistence to graduation, technical training? We have a, we experience through our economic development projects we work, it's very difficult to find skilled workers, and yet we have thousands of unemployed people who don't have any skills, because they either dropped out of high school, didn't take schooling seriously, or had jobs that didn't require any technical training, have lost those jobs through the economy and have not gotten technical training. So what role do you all take in trying to develop a skilled work... So what, what role do you all take in trying to develop a skilled workforce, which does more to alleviate poverty than any social benefit you can give? Because it allows, you know, it's the old adage, give a person a fish, they eat for a day, teach a person a fish, they eat for a life.
Certainly. I would say, please keep in mind that the folks that we do serve are all income-eligible folks. So if they are receiving, specifically, there's one program. We specifically do one program for employment and training, and that's Missouri Work Assistance, and that's the program that I've worked on for the last four years before this position. And that, like I said, is the only program that CMCA offers for employment and training, and these folks have to be receiving TANF. They have to be receiving welfare. They cannot be somebody, Joe Blow off the street, walking in the door and saying, hey, I want an education. You know, we can give referrals to anybody off the street, no problem, but for that benefit of that program, so there are supportive services that, there are monies available to pay for tuition and reimburse, not reimbursement, but for tuition and like books, et cetera, to get into school, application fees. We work with folks with GEDs, because the folks that we have coming in for that program are low, low, low-skilled. These are your severely low-skilled folks that need soft skill training. What you're speaking to is not necessarily what CMCA encompasses within that program. You know, I would agree that there are some very big needs.
I mean, you work with a lot of families, obviously. A lot of those families have kids in school. What kind of programs do you all administer or offer, or that, to focus even less on the parents and more on the kids, to get them to break the cycle?
So Head Start, that's the only education one program.
Which is up to five.
Yep.
There's nothing once they get into-
You know-
The education system.
I hate to say it, but we, and the thing is, is that CMCA, you know, at this point, after, you know, five years old, once they're in the school, unless they are income-eligible for one of the programs that the federal money gives the agency money for, then there's, the assistance isn't there for them.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
You know, it's not the top three answer, but-
The problem with the system is, it's like our, it's like healthcare. You know, there's preventative, and there's treat the symptoms. All we do is try to mitigate the symptoms. We don't try to, we don't try to, we don't try to make the, we don't try to have a healthy body. We just try to say, if you don't feel good, we'll give you an adult.
Medicine.
It's not the way to fix it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I ask tough questions, I'm sorry about that, but, I mean, I think you guys do do a good job, and I know you're handcuffed to a certain extent by what your mission is through the government.
Well, and I'll be honest, there was a better, there was, not a better, but we just, we just bid for and did not receive a grant for the WIA program, which is Workforce Investment Act. We held it for 11 years, and it was bid out to an agency called GAM, and that's operated on the Career Center locally.
Mm-hmm.
And that program has had a lot of restraints put on it, pawned by just budget cuts within the federal government, and so they're getting less monies, but at the same time, it was meant for folks going back into education.
Right.
Dislocated workers, people that have lost their jobs, et cetera, but, you know, we're not operating that program anymore.
Okay.
So.
Do you guys have any other questions for Ashley?
I don't have a problem with the ones that are helping people that are trying to help themselves, but it's just too many of them. You see that they're got 14 pets, they're smoking cigarettes, got seven cell phones, and then they come and want more free stuff. Do y'all, can y'all drug test them?
There are those that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can y'all drug test them?
That just got passed in Missouri.
Sweet.
Governor Nixon passed that, that's actually happening.
There is an anecdotal issue that we deal with.
We were trained on how to actually, in my previous position, on how to handle folks that, you know, we have to ask very specific questions in how we assess those clients, to see what their barriers are, to help them remove those barriers, and some of those drug questions came up. And actually, family services, when they apply to for TANF, for food stamps, for Medicaid, they actually have to answer questions as well. And there's a, I don't know how to, I'm not thinking of the right words, but it's an automated, so it doesn't put anybody that's asking the questions on the firing line per se, so I can't say that they were being, you know, I'm black, so-
Right.
That kind of a thing, but profiling, but that's actually happening. And then what happens is that information gets sent to the state, and the state has it set up so that a letter will go out to these people's homes, and they have to show a current urine test, and if they don't show up, then their benefits are cut off. So all of that is happening currently in Missouri, and that started this year.
The, I hear a lot of anecdotal stories about food stamps. About, and I've seen it myself, you know, people that are paying on food stamps and kind of gaming the system a little bit, it seems like.
I think that that's alive and well. I will share with you very personally that-
Do we crack down on that?
You know, I'm sorry.
Do we, do you guys, are you involved in any of the enforcement of that? That's totally done by-
That's all state and federal, yeah, and there are systems in place. I don't know what that looks like, but-
Yeah.
You know, I will share with you, so that, you know, I'm the face of poverty, essentially, because I'm not going to go into details, but my mother was a single mother of three children, she passed away, I live with my father, and she was a single mother on welfare. You know, I got a college education, and here I am trying to help others.
Right.
You know, and that's what the system is really meant for. It's meant to help folks get a leg up and move off of it.
Right.
And so, from having a personal experience in helping others, you know, I can sit here and say, I know what poverty's like from an everyday living situation, and then I can go and help people say, hey, I can do it, you can do it, we can do it together. And yes, you're going to have those folks that abuse the system. Sorry, that's always going to happen.
Yeah, we just have to take them off the system.
There are ways, and they're, they're, they're becoming more and more breakdown, crap-down ways that that happens.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're all frustrated with some of the system, but, you know, I, I try to give people an opportunity to, to work for me, and time and time again, they, they show up for a week, and then they quit showing up, and it's-
Plenty of work around.
Yeah.
There was, you know, the welfare reform that happened in the 80s, unfortunately, it should have happened a couple months sooner, but that, you know, it's not, it's not, you know, a forever program anymore. It's five years and 60 months, and, you know, that takes time for folks, the generational poverty, that is, as an issue, is going to take time. You know, some of these other issues, we can-
And part of the problem, too, is the welfare reform only addressed one small part of it. You know, they may lose their, they may lose certain benefits after five years, but they continue to be eligible for Medicaid. They continue, you know, they, they continue to be eligible for other benefits.
Food stamps, food stamps is a forever program.
Right.
You know, so, and the thing is, if you keep in mind that TANF and welfare isn't for adults, it's not, truly, it's not to enable the adults. It's really to help the kids, because these families, they have to have children to receive those benefits, and it is, that's what it's for.
I see a lot less baby food and a lot more Doritos and things like that, along with the 12-pack of beer that's in, they have to pay for with cash, because they can't pay for with the food stamps.
And EBT cards actually just put another-
Prime Rev? Yeah.
They aren't able to buy, you know, purchase tobacco products, alcohol products, walk into an establishment that has pornography, any of it. So, like I said, there's more and more, you know, restrictions that are coming, so.
And, you know, I've known people that have been on food stamps that talk about how they're able to make it go so far, and their kids are never hungry, but they don't buy Prime Rev, and they don't, you know.
It's always the people that really need it, and then there's the people that don't.
You see people check, you see one basket at Walmart that's full of Walmart ground beef and Walmart cereal, and, and they have no problems, and you see the other basket that's filled with nothing but steaks, and, and they've got 12 items in there, and they've spent their whole benefit on it.
Yeah.
They're living good for the one day.
Yeah.
So you can be like, maybe get behind one of 17,000 coupons.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ashley. We appreciate what y'all do. Thank you.
Oh, really? You're welcome. Nice to meet you, Jeff, by the way.
He's our, he's our comedian up here.
Apparently, today's the stand-up show. You'll be coming soon to a theater near you. Don't forget to, don't forget to tip your waiters and waitresses. All right, we've got two items left, gravel road upgrade and workers' comp, but I think we had discussed we may go in closed session on the second item. Okay, so if you all don't mind, okay. Gravel road upgrade.
What'd you guys put in that, those eggs out there? Ask them what they put in the eggs out there.
They got you all fired up today.
Those are the carrots.
Well, a couple weeks ago, Chris and I were talking over the phone about, I don't know how the topic came up exactly, but something along the lines of gravel roads, and it may have been one that somebody had called about wanting us to do.
Yeah.
It didn't meet the criteria, or something like that. I don't remember the exact context of what you were talking about.
You always get, you always get people that are wanting their gravel road paved, and so that's kind of where it started.
Yeah. But Chris asked that we come up here and just kind of, just an open conversation about the gravel road policy, where it is today, where it's come from in the past, and then where, where to go in the future. And as far as where to go in the future, I don't, we're not going to be able to make that decision today. Maybe get the ball rolling on maybe some discussions over the next year or two about what the future of the gravel road policy and program is. As you know, you know, us at Public Works, we're, we implement the policy, the county commission makes the policy, but we're certainly here for providing input and recommendations. But ultimately, the county commission makes that decision. We've had over the years, I've been, been with the county for over eight years now, and I hear it time and time again, well, back when the sales tax was passed, you know, the county promised to pave every gravel road. But we can't find any, there's definitely no documentation of that.
Well, and, and we've renewed it several times, and we certainly have not promised that renewal, so.
So that, that's, that's a fallacy that some people have been led to believe. We also hear a lot that, what's that?
It was actually said, it wasn't written down, that it was-
People that said that.
At the, at the very first one.
That the goal was to-
The goal was there.
But there was never any, this is what we're going to, we're going to pave every road regardless of whether it would qualify or not. And so that, that's something that, that we hear a lot. Another thing we get is, you know, somebody buys a farm or something out on a gravel road, and they say, well, when I bought this farm, so-and-so said that the county's going to pave it. We're fighting that down currently on a road that, Jeff probably knows about it. We're currently fighting that on, on a road now, and, and so we get that a lot, too. You know, basically, we were working off of the, the policy, which is, which has a ranking formula figured into it. The policy is, is from May of 2001, and so it's, you know, 12 years since it was updated, and this is, this is an update from a previous policy, and so it has changed over the years, but the last revision was in 2001. The ranking formula takes different factors and comes up with a rating system. And the roads that have, we have a petition on to upgrade, they're ranked against each other. And I gave you that handout, and the ones in yellow are the ones that are currently in the designed phase to go to construction in this sales tax. Mount Carmel will actually be done this year. Morale Ridge Road is, is another one that Mark and Larry met with the Muslim church out there at the end of that road, and that's just across from our shop off of Monticello. And that one does meet the criteria for the traffic count. It ranks a little low, but with it being the church, and then it's got a cemetery, too. And there, there was a commitment made to, to upgrade that road, and I think our plan on that would be, we'd probably do the grading work ourselves in-house.
It's a pretty short stretch. Just FYI, Chris, because I don't think you were up here last time we did one of these. We have a internal policy, I don't think it's written down, but we've administered it, that if a church that operates a cemetery asks to have the road paved to the cemetery, we'll pave up to the cemetery. We won't pave beyond it, but we will pave up to the cemetery. And we did that out in St. John's, we did it at St. Thomas, I mean, we have a history doing it, but it's only to the cemetery. So if, if the road wants to, you know, if, for example, if the church is past the cemetery, we wouldn't pave to the church. We would just pave to the entrance of the cemetery.
The cemetery built at the end of the road.
I guess that was my question there, is, is there a size to the cemetery, or?
It's got to be an operational, active cemetery.
Okay.
You know, a family cemetery won't apply, because it's not church. It has to be public, to the extent that church is a public, obviously.
Is that the policy, or?
That's how we've administered it.
Okay.
You know, if you had a closed cemetery that's no longer being used, we wouldn't pave to it. And if it's a, if it was a private, like a family cemetery, we wouldn't pave to it. But if it's an active church and has an active cemetery, we would pave to the gate of the cemetery.
So we're, we're going to start working on that, and I think you want to do that next year, is that correct?
Yeah, and it's a real short, is it even a tenth of a mile?
Yeah, it's maybe 1,000 feet at the most.
Yeah, and we were looking at Chris, or Mark, on that. We only, only 170 feet past that is where we stopped maintenance, so.
Might do it all?
Yeah, we were looking at doing it, so we could create a turnaround where now we're using people's driveways and private roads and stuff, so. You know, that's something that we were going to, when we get the cost assessment done, we haven't been able to get that.
I was just trying to find it here.
So that, that product-
I didn't even pull up on GIS.
We'll have some numbers for that for the budget for next year.
It's right behind DAV, you know where it's at, road that goes up there. There's actually a number of homes back off the end of it, so.
It's almost like a, just a, it's almost like a one-lane road, isn't it?
It's two lanes. We've got it open. I mean, it's, two cars can pass.
It's the road that has the vacated bed, continues to go on past it, it's been vacated for- Forever. I don't know it's ever been.
If you remember back a few months ago, we brought to you, MoDOT's going to do some survey in there. It's actually, was never vacated, and so it's still moed out right away.
Oh, that's right.
It's the old, old highway.
The old, old highway.
So, anyway, we're going to take care of that. But also on, on the sheet here, the, the two numbers in red would be the only roads that would be on what we currently have in the mix to do in the sales tax that would meet the 125 car per day, or vehicle per day requirement to qualify for paving.
Lesch and Hope.
Lesch and Mount Hope. So, you know, where do we go after the next?
How long are those runs?
Lesch Road, it's actually paved down to the Morale River. There's a fairly new bridge over down there. I'd say, give or take-
About a mile, maybe?
Two miles at the most, maybe less.
What about Mount Hope?
Yeah, Mount Hope, it's, it kind of the main, the main route there. Mount Hope goes down probably a half mile, and then it turns Waterford Road. That's kind of the, the bulk of the traffic goes that way, but then Mount Hope continues on beyond there.
So we'd pave to the intersection?
Probably pave to the intersection if you were just going to do, you know, just meet what the traffic count there, you know, just to do that traffic count part of it, but.
Should we go out and re-update those counts?
We need to.
On those two roads, and maybe look at putting those in the next few years' cycle?
Before we start working on the next sales tax, we'll want to update this to see where we're at, and that, that would also include updating the traffic counts. They're, they're a little outdated. I mean, unless you see some houses being built or whatnot, you don't really see a lot of growth in these numbers. But it just depends on, you know, what kind of activity, mostly home building, or maybe a farm or something. If something changes hands or something like that, you might see some change, so. But anyway, that, that's kind of where we're at, and I guess we just maybe open it up for discussion and see what, what you're all saw. It's what you want us to do as far as coming up with, do, do we want to revise this policy? Do we want to run it through the Road and Bridge Advisory Committee possibly, and, and get their input?
Can you put distance on this chart, too, so we know how long, because that gives you an idea of the cost of something. You have two roads, but it takes up all the money.
Yeah, but you also need to then know where the count is.
I'm not saying to take any of this off, I'm just saying that-
No, 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 I'm just saying, if, so for example, if you've got a four-mile-long road, and you run the counter right at the major, major intersection, you may have 140 cars, and 160 yards down the road, there's a subdivision, and the rest of the road has a 12-car, you know, I mean-
I'll vote to do part of the road then. I said that when we did Flaming Creek.
When we do the counts, the, the number here is actually an average. We do-
Oh, it is, across the whole road?
Yeah, we do them, you know, two or three, at least two.
Well, running from the Flaming Creek, because now we take a road grader down there, it just takes a half minute drive there. It takes you 10 minutes to grade it, until you get to the end of the road.
You're just getting grief from people down there.
No, it just don't work. Well, then you got to stop cutting grass at the pavement, too, and then you come back later to gravel roads.
You want to just let me agenda?
I know.
No, I just started.
No, I want him to be able to ask his questions, as opposed to you.
Well, when I talked to Eric a little bit, you know, one of my concerns was, what, what will we pave in the next cycle, or, you know, how much, how many miles of road are we going to have to maintain? How are we going to use this money? You know, how are we going to sell this sales tax? And I, I don't, I don't see the point of, of paving a lot of roads that don't have a lot of traffic. But at the same time, we, you know, we, we need to kind of know how much money we're going to need to maintain these blacktop roads versus the gravel roads, and, and what that number is. What, what's it take, you know, over a- and, and what that number is, what, what's it take, you know, over a course of 10 years, you know, if we're getting 10 years out of a pavement, what's it gonna take to, to resurface those, what's it take to, to maintain a gravel road? And so I think those costs would be important as we move forward into the next sales tax cycle.
Your maintenance is gonna be a lot lower on the pavement.
Well, but it's.
It's not like we're sitting there paying a lot of money to do it, which then.
Yeah, if there's an equation, there should be an equation there you guys can look at and kind of.
I did, I looked at that a couple of years ago and came up with a, I kinda averaged it out, you know, and figuring, figuring in inflation and things like that, and what it would cost average per year on an asphalt road, and I could bring that back up and.
Yep.
Plus the bond laws you get from the people that own the gravel roads.
No, you don't count those.
That's the threat you gotta make, of the time.
Oh, good God.
That don't count.
That didn't count.
I got $600,000, that don't bother me at all, and I got four.
Well, you know, I got a solution for you, you can, you can go out with a separate bond issue, you know, we'll call it the Jeff Hellsher Memorial Gravel Road Bond Program.
Don't call it memorial.
No, trust me, because if you go out with a separate bond program to pave all the roads and gravel roads in the county, it will be your memorial bond issue.
What I'd recommend, too, is that the next pay cycle, or the next tax cycle, we look at doing some kinda cost share program where if they don't have the count, or it's a dead-end road, or something to make this money go farther, is for them to come to us and say, you know, how much would y'all be willing to throw into, because, you know, we don't quite have the count, but we'd really like to have it done, we'll put some skin in the game, let's get it done. We do city, county, cooperative projects, stuff like that, so, I mean, it's an idea we can look at, I don't know if anybody else.
Don't we already have that in place, though?
In subdivision roads, we've done that.
Where they.
They do NIDs or something, they pay for it all on taxes, but we're not throwing any of the taxes.
Well, we've, we've done it before on regular roads, like dead-end roads, I know, like my road, we did that when they built the subdivision in there.
I mean, I think, I think more for doing more of that, we can spread the, spread it out more, I just, I don't know, gravel roads, I just think a lot more on maintenance, but I could be wrong.
Well, like Larry said, we have done some cooperative things, where the property owners pay for the surfacing, we do the grading and base rock and all that kinda thing, and we could come up with more written-down policies for that.
I don't have any problem with that, I think that makes some sense, but in the end, if you buy a house on a gravel road, you should have a reasonable expectation that you're going to live on a gravel road.
I agree.
Yep, I, I agree, I wish my road was gravel, and, I mean, it's, it's, it's a highway, I mean, you pave it, and I was out at Ma- Mount Carmel the other day, and I was like, man, they're gonna be flying down this thing with 60 mile-an-hour speed limit, because they'll, they'll be doing it, I guarantee ya.
And anybody who wants to live on a paved road should buy land on a paved road, and that's what it comes down to. And you can't really complain if you choose to live on gravel, and you can't really complain because you made that choice, it's your decision.
I'd like to see some costs on, on what the life cycle of a paved road versus what your maintenance costs per year, you know, y'all be able to average that, what life cycle of a paved road costs, and then, uh, what a gravel road costs you to maintain per year, so.
Chip seal versus regular pave?
Not much difference in that.
That's the one I did, it was a chip seal versus asphalt, when we were kinda debating whether to do one or the other on a road.
Well, it's more of it's in the prep, because I've talked to Larry about that before, and you're gonna prep up the same, otherwise we run into what we ran into down 06 bend road, chip seal, and then you come back and you didn't prep underneath of it, and you got all these problems that you're continuously having to maintain, that's where your maintenance runs into problems.
With, with the chip seal, you gotta come back and resurface it every three years or so, and over time, I think it, the asphalt option is better over the long term.
Yeah, I think that's, well, I might talk to you about it, too, but y'all said it's about a wash, but you, you still have to prep it underneath.
And that, we, and you very well know, East Bend Road and High Point, and where we tried back in the day to do it, just grading the road, put a little base rock down, chip seal on it, I've even brought other counties up that are thinking about doing the same thing, and tell them don't, it's, it's been a maintenance nightmare for us, so, and if we go back in and do East Bend, redo it, we basically gotta tear the road out and restart from scratch like we're doing now.
That road's still better than a gravel road, though. You can't drive it much faster than a gravel road.
Yeah, in the 2001 to 2006 sales tax, the, we had a, a low-volume gravel road upgrade policy, and that was doing the chip seal, and these were roads that didn't have 125, 125 cars a day, and so we did a number of those.
And we paid the price for that forever.
That's where I think a cost share would be, we can do that and say, this is how much we're gonna put into this.
And that, and that program, I don't know how many times I've had people that live on gravel roads that don't qualify call me and say, but you used to do these roads.
That's a key word, you used to.
I know, but people have selective hearing, they, you know, the reality is, is if you say, we're gonna have a low gravel road upgrade program, there's a segment of people that will hear, all gravel roads are being upgraded.
Back when we first started this, we were doing, um, we were probably doing a lot of the grading ourselves, I know we did, we did, we did cold mix for the surface.
We still had contractors grade most of them.
That we were laying the cold mix, right?
Yeah.
I mean, and it was a lot cheaper back then, but times have changed, and asphalt's probably, since we first started, probably gone up 10 times, I bet, since, since the inception of the gravel road upgrade program, and it just, you know, the costs have gotten a lot more, and we found that these blade mix or cold mix roads, you're going in and having to patch them all the time when you do an overlay, and it just, it hasn't been as cost-effective to do that route, you know, over the long term, so that's how we got to where we are today. The drawback is, it's a lot more expensive to do them.
Okay, any other questions?
When's the next sales tax cycle?
16.
16?
It would start in 17, we would vote on it in 16, so.
So next year's year we have starter planning?
Next year, yeah.
If you wait till 15, it gets too late to plan, if you can't get far enough out in advance.
Start thinking about it next year, probably start putting together.
We're gonna play on the ballot.
We go January 1, right?
It's past February, it's either gone.
No, no, I'm saying, our effective date's January 1.
Yeah, effective, yeah.
So that means you have to vote in August, or earlier.
Yeah.
August of 15, or?
We've never had one.
What year are we in now? We're in year two, January's year three, right?
Yeah, we're in two, our second year.
They tend to run together, I forget.
So when did we have to vote on it, by?
Uh, well, let's see, what year's next year?
14.
14, 15, the latest you could possibly vote would be August of 16, that would be the deadline.
I think last time we voted, did we get it in August?
We did, city went in November.
I think all the others, we got them in April, but for some reason, we stayed away from April.
I think the city or transformation or something in there.
Transformation was on, yeah.
But I think we still wanna get as early as possible before we step on the ballot.
Me personally, I would recommend going in, in April, that way if there was an issue and it didn't pass, you know, I was originally thinking 35, 45, 50, 60, 70, uh, just run in April, and if there was an issue, bring it back in August to see whether we have it.
Well, that's a decision for way down the road, but I think the list of projects we need to start working on now, and doing the prep work on.
I agree.
Okay, thank you guys, appreciate it. All right, Jennifer, you guys are up. We'll talk about work comp.
Hey, if you're on golf, somebody get a gun there sometimes.
Sorry, Larry, sorry.
God dang, sorry about that sound.
Have a seat, please. There's microphones right here, we'd ask that you talk into the microphones if possible. They're not working?
No, they aren't.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
And if we decide we wanna talk about specific cases, we will have to stop and go into closed session, just so you know.
Then you wanna take a look at what Dale's coming up. I, Jennifer Gerling with Wall Street Group brought Dick Pearson with me today. Terry Sweeten's loss control prevention, and Dale Mies is also loss control. Dale's gonna do our presentation today on kinda like the claims that we've had in the past couple of years. Basically, my role is to, you know, gather your payroll, take it to the company, and present you guys a good rate. We do not have all the rates in yet, she's working in December still, Shapal's getting two weeks, I should have it. We do know, you know, your mod's up just 3%, and then we did a payroll increase about 4%. We don't know the rate yet, so, two weeks, I can, you know, come back and move those to you guys, so you know that.
Mid-November, mid-December?
You, you renew December 31st.
Okay.
To the end of October, I will have your rate.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yeah, it's usually 60 days.
Okay.
So I try to rush her, but I don't always like to rush underwriters, if you don't want them to do those numbers too fast, so, but I'll let Dale do his presentation, just kinda see where you guys are on your claims process.
Welcome to the commission, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
If you just turn a microphone in front of you.
Does that work?
Perfect.
Well, what I've got here is a little, it's called a mod master program, we have it, it's pretty common in the work comp industry. What I've done on the one I handed out, and I've got another one, too, that if you want, I can share it with you, this is for your current policy year, your effective age 1231 to 2013, which is your new renewal premium cycle coming up. The E-mod's a .78, as Jennifer indicated, this current year, it's a .75, so it did jump up three percentage points, which is a small increase, so, not too big a deal. .78's very good, that means this account is really good. Average E-mod is 1.00, if you get above one E-mod, you're considered to be above average in losses, not so good of a count. So, that's a simple way. The first page you have there, I've got it broken down by policy years from 2000, the '09, '10 policy year, the '10, '11 policy year, and the '11, '12 policy year. Those three years are what's making up your E-mod effective 1231. As you can see, the yellow graph is what NCCI says is expected losses for your type of work and your payrolls. The green graph is basically your actual losses, incurred losses. So as you can see, you guys are well below average, which in this case is very good. Your best year you had was 2009, 2010, I think you only like 5,000 in total incurred claims, 5,400, something of that nature. So, but you did see an increase in the '11, '12 policy year. Current policy you're in is a, is lower than the current, the '11, '12 policy year, but you still have a couple more months on that, so those claims haven't fully developed, so that could change. But you can kinda, you see what, you know, on the bottom there, it talks about your, you know, adjusted losses and expected losses under the NCCI, which is a national council on compensation insurance, and they're the ones that generate the, the E-mods, they're the ones that help, a lot of insurance companies use what NCCI says as far as basing rates, setting rates, whether the rates need to go up, go down. I think in the current year, NCCI is wanting a.
11.3% increase.
11.6.
11.6% increase, and that's, most insurance companies follow that, I'd say 90-plus percent. And I've been with MEM for a year, but the companies I've worked with in the past, that's kinda how the whole industry says, okay, we need to either bring rates up or bring them down, and that will, you know, 11.6 is overall, some class codes, depending on what it is, will go down, some may go up 30%, you know, the 11.6 is an average, so, depending on what class code you have, your, you know, the occupation, so to speak, from a plumber to electrician to sheriff's department to animal control or EMS, you know, animals, all those rates will vary. So, but that gives you an idea that, you know, from an insurance standpoint, from a work comp, you guys are doing a lot better than the average county, so, you know, employees should be commended on that. The third page, I broke this down by department, there's no specific as far as names of people on here, they won't put names or anything, but this gives you an idea, and this is for all three years, that you have the sheriff's department, they had a total of nine losses for that three-year period.
Nine individual persons is when you say losses?
Yeah, nine individual claims, with a total of, the total incurred loss was 86,892. NCCI will adjust it, adjust it down to 83,409. The impact on a mod, it basically says it raised the mod at .05%. And then the last one there shows the impact on your premium. If you'd have took all those claims away over the past three years, you would've saved 65,000 in premium.
And how much do we spend in premium a year?
Last year was 230, 4,000.
204. So, we would've had a, just if we took off those nine claims, we would've saved 20% off our premium.
Well, that's, 65,000's over a three-year period.
No, I understand that.
So.
The 20,000 would be a single year.
Correct, yeah.
10% off of a single year because of those claims.
This, this just confuses me.
So if we had no claims for a year, theoretically.
I mean, I don't.
Our rates should go to zero, theoretically. You'd have no exposure, no claims, you'd have a zero rate, obviously, that's not the case.
There's a minimum, yeah.
Right, so, it strikes me that, for example, that the one inju, the big cost on this particular department was the very end of 2012 occurrence, right?
$66,000 claim, yes.
Okay, so it happened right at the end of 2012, so we can only be one year into that claim, but it's got a three-year number.
Well, because that, that claim stays on your E-mod in the farmer for three years.
So you get charged three times for a claim?
Yeah, you get dinged for three years.
Well, it's a good year, it's three, three years, a good year, too, it's either way, but in this situation, you know.
So a single claim, if you guys spend $10,000 on a claim, it actually costs us $30,000 in premium?
No, a 10,000 claim might cost you, what they're saying is that we spent 66,000 on that claim, we recoup 45,000 back, essentially based on the E-mod. Because once it goes past that fourth year, it's off the E-mod, we can't hold it, it does, it's not held against you anymore, does that make sense?
I guess what I'm trying to get my arms around is, you said that if we didn't have those nine claims, we'd had, we'd have saved 65,000 in premium.
Over a three-year period.
Over a three-year period, but you own, that's what I'm trying to get my arms around, so it's $20,000 a year we would've saved.
Yeah, and you can see, if you look at it here.
If we only had a $15,000 claim in one year.
Oh, yeah, your premium would've been, if you just had a $15,000 claim, you know, your, your losses, your, it will affect your E-mod, it brings your E-mod down, and that's where the, it saves you the money.
But a 15, if you have one, if you have one claim in a year, and it's a $15,000 claim, it costs you $15,000 in insurance rates. That's how I read this chart, I mean, am I missing that?
Yeah, you're.
This is really just the experience mod.
Yeah, it's experience mod.
This doesn't take into.
This doesn't go towards your, because you had indicated that if you didn't have these claims, you'd have saved this much in rate.
Based on, without these claims, it'd have brought your E-mod down to, your lowest E-mod you can get if you had three years of no losses, and again, the E-mod's calculated for a three-year period.
All right.
Would be a .66.
Okay.
You're still gonna have an E-mod, it wouldn't be zero, the E-mod, it'd be a .66.
So the difference between .78 and .66 is really where this had the impact?
That's where it has the impact.
Okay, I understand, I understand now.
It's a, it's a way to, what this is wanting to show is a big claim, like the one here, if it's preventable, and I don't know the, I'd have to go back and look at the loss runs, but some of these claims, I think that one was a guy just walking across the parking lot.
Actually.
If you wanna go into individuals, we better go into closed session.
Yeah, but those are examples where we're.
Yeah, let's, let's cover it from 10,000 feet, and then if we wanna come back and have discussions on individuals, we can close session.
But those are things, what we're, what, what we wanna use this far is to give you, if it's a preventable claim, saying, you know, safety and going after things, this is where a preventable claim, if we could prevent it, would've saved up this much money to help bring the E-mod down.
Okay, now I understand.
Another way to look at this, too, is your, your top department is leading your, the top one listed here, which is sheriff's department, is leading the loss history.
Right.
And you keep going down from there. So that's another thing to take from this mod master machine.
And actually, when you consider the sheriff's department, the jail are the same department.
And I broke it down to jailers and.
But I mean, they're the same depart, and inside of our organization, they're the same department.
The first two are the same department, yes.
They do have different class codes.
Correct.
Okay.
And you can break it down EMS, which I think you started, is that oh-nine or ten centers in there?
Nine.
You brought EMS on. And you can see there, just from there, the claims they've had, four claims. Historically, we insure a lot of ambulance districts EMS. Usually, and Terry, you can probably speak to this as much, it's a challenge from a safety standpoint in work comp due to, they may get a call, have to go down steps, and have a three hundred fifty pound or plus.
Right.
So, there's a lot of challenges there that with all the safety training you can possibly do, sometimes it doesn't, doesn't work out for you. But this was just given to kind of give you an idea where your losses are from a department standpoint. Road and Bridge Public Works has added five claims with only incurred loss of ten thousand one hundred sixty-one. So, when you look at that department from a payroll standpoint, they are a good portion of your payroll.
So we have three hundred and fifty employees, give or take. Times three years would be thousand fifty employees. And we've had twenty claims, maybe? Twenty-two claims. We've had twenty-two claims over a thousand fifty employees.
We've had more claims. A lot of them are report only, incident only. That doesn't affect.
Yeah, the report only is one where somebody got hurt, but there's no medical paid.
Right. I guess you should say claims repaid. So there's a thousand, that's pretty good, really.
Well, your claim frequency is astonishingly great.
Two percent?
Yeah, it's very good compared to other counties that we insure, similar type county size, and you guys are well above them, so.
Well, in two thousand nine and ten, I mean, your experience mod was one point zero eight. So where you went from there to here, you keep going down each year. So you guys are improving. When we first took over the count, we came in, Terry came in at a time, and we sat with all the department heads, and we went over loss control. I mean, Terry walked through the old jail. We did all that. And, you know, I think it's also something, even though your claims are good, you have claims in this year. But I think it's still something we need to continue to do, you know, meet with them again, go over. And have you been to the new jail yet?
I have, well, yeah, I've been to the jail a lot of times.
Okay, you might want to rephrase that comment.
Well, the previous company I worked for insured all the property for Cole County.
Okay.
So we had to builder's risk to the jail process, so the whole time is being built.
That was a much better explanation than the way you said it the first time. No, actually, we do, it's a gag up here. We get anybody to admit they've been in jail.
But it's the education, I guess, especially to the supervisors and stuff about what is a worker comp claim?
Microphone.
What is not a worker comp claim?
Unfortunately, employees think anything that happens at work, it should be workers come. But through the education and the changing of the laws, it helps the employer's side of it to say, yeah, you may have had something happen here, but it wasn't because of your work actions that caused it.
And at one point, it was Road Bridge leading the loss history, and they have made amazing, I mean, we've done education with them. They're doing safety training now. They're doing safety rules. I've been out through the facilities, you know, it's made, they've really turned it around.
Good.
Considering the work they do, they do have a low count. It's good.
Right.
I just thought this was something for you guys, just to take a look at, just so you see what's going on in a day-to-day basis.
I'd just like you to keep an eye on it. Like you have been. If you see there's a problem that we can't address somehow with training, education, or whatever, because that sounds like that's been part of the biggest thing, is training supervisors about what is claimable and stuff, so. Thank you.
Right. I think the important thing is that we believe in, with their encouragement, we believe in proactive approach, less eliminate, like in healthcare, let's eliminate the losses before they happen, teach people how to do safety. And, you know, there are a lot of carriers out there that do work comp. There's nobody, in my opinion, that does a good job of this very important thing.
Now, you guys are great. We appreciate it. Do you guys have cards? Can I get one, please?
One thing I would encourage you to look at is when you have a minute, look at your loss history, though, because it will describe how some of the injuries and accidents have happened. And I think what we're looking at, what I'm seeing a little bit more of a trend in, since I've worked with your account, since you've been with MEM, has been.
Thanks, sir.
Things that were clearly work-related were on your loss history. We're getting into a trend now, a little bit more of things that are not clearly work-related.
What can we do about that, though? Are you responsible for that, or is that?
Well, it kind of comes down to your department heads.
Why don't we have a closed session, discuss this part? Because I think this may be more instructive if we can talk specifics as opposed to general, I mean, seriously, I think it'd be better. Do you have any other questions regarding just the general detail?
Well, no, I mean, I'm just totally frustrated with work comp in general, but, you know, because, you know, you seem like you ding us for everything that we claim, but yet our expected losses are a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we're well, well under that. So, you know, to me, when you have an expected loss of a hundred and sixty thousand, you know, I shouldn't be dinged till I exceed a hundred and sixty thousand. And then you're telling me that it's gonna go up eleven point six percent, too. So, you know, at what point is a?
But doesn't mean we're gonna go up eleven point six percent.
Yeah, that's the average. There are some accounts we are writing that are going up forty percent.
Okay, and that is not MEM's eleven point six percent. That is NCCI's eleven point six percent. A lot of that contributes to the recent second entry fund changes, their funding of that second entry fund. It was a three percent charge surcharge. Every company in the state of Missouri gets a three percent surcharge. In order to fund it, because they were not adequately funded, there's an additional three percent. So that's a six percent, you're gonna see a three percent increase.
No matter what?
No matter what you do. Another thing with that second entry fund was a mesothelioma fund. That is something, there's nine or ten different occupational diseases under that. It is going to give employees that are under that program a two to three hundred times increase. That's part of those eleven point six. I mean, it's gonna cost employers in the state money.
But we may not have any increase theoretically, theoretically.
Right.
I mean, because if our experience was really good, we would have a drop. Those increases would, the new taxes would offset against it. It could be, it could be a wash.
And I can see what we're looking at with the eleven percent, six point six, eleven point six percent increase. If you're doing what you need to be doing, you're managing your losses, your experience mod is low, and like I said, that is a huge indicator out there. If you're doing what you need to be doing, you'll see probably a decrease overall because your payroll, your premium, your E-mod, all of those things contribute. What's going to hit employers in the state of Missouri is the ones that are not controlling their losses. They're gonna see a huge increase across the board.
But I'd like to go back to his, to Chris's comment. I mean, I do have a frustration with, if we're expected to have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in losses, and we're less than that.
That's where your E-mod.
Our mod should come down.
It is coming down.
But I just heard it's going up.
Well.
We're at point seven five, we're going to point seven eight. That's a three percent increase.
True.
But once again, we're under our estimated loss, which should be a decrease. So if you expect us, if our premium's based upon an expectation that we're going to cost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and we don't cost you a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, how can our premium go up based upon the mod? I can understand how it would go up with the tax. I understand the tax side. But on the mod, if you expect one sixty, and we're under one sixty, that, my understanding of mod is, that reduces our mod.
Okay, you already are getting it, but that's what your experience modification does for you, like your point seven eight. Your expected losses are based on the one point oh level. In other words, average expected losses for your class of business is one point oh.
So the expected loss, this isn't expected loss us.
If you're minus. Minus point seven eight, you're getting a twenty-two percent discount because you were below expected loss.
The expected losses is, this is innate. If you, and I don't, you know, I don't have all your policy.
So it'd be twenty-two percent less one sixty.
Twenty-two percent less, yes. So you're getting a discount.
Okay.
You're getting that discount.
So expected loss.
Your numbers are getting closer to that expected loss, as your expected losses get closer, as your actual losses get closer.
We start going closer to one.
If you look at the bar, you're trending in the wrong direction. You're good, you're still good, but you're still trending.
But I guess the question I had was, and I think I understand now, expected losses is not what you expect Cole County to have.
It's based on all counties. You have class codes, you know, from the eight, tens clerk.
Class coding on cross, you guys.
That's based on Camden County, Marys County, whatever county in Indiana. It's based on counties throughout the nation.
So we had a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in claims last year?
In reserve. They're either open or closed claims.
I think a hundred forty-seven, thirty-seven, whatever.
Hundred forty-seven?
Yeah.
Last year? And then when I look at the chart, I can't come, is that what all these add up to then? Two hundred and twelve thousand over three years? Yeah, I guess so. I guess that's what it is.
Yeah, two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven.
Okay.
Over three-year period. And that's, I'm saying, when you get a point seven E-mod, that's where you're getting a twenty-two percent decrease in what a county with a one E-mod normally would have paid.
Okay, makes sense.
So from a standpoint of counties, you're paying a whole lot less. We insure Camden County. You're paying a whole lot less.
Well, our mod started in two thousand and eleven at ninety-six. In two thousand and twelve, it went to eighty-five. In two thousand and thirteen, it was seventy-five.
And now it's gonna trip up a little bit.
Just a point seven eight.
Point seven eight.
Yeah, twelve thirty-one for the two thousand thirteen to fourteen policy year, it's gonna be a point seven eight.
Because we have had more claims.
Yeah, and my program could forecast, you know, future E-mod, too.
Okay. So, one of my other questions is, is some of these smaller claims that seem to be dinging us, why can't we pay those in-house?
You can only pay the first thousand dollars of a claim legally under the work comp statute, and if there's under three days of loss time or no settlement. So you can, those are the only ones you're allowed to pay by the statute.
Government screwing us again.
Yeah, that's not the work comp. That's the work comp law.
Well, government.
Talk to your legislator.
The, with the reduction that NCCI came up with last year of the met-only claims, a lot of those claims are reduced seventy percent by NCCI now. So, and we've talked, and Debbie kind of, Debbie does a real good job keeping track of the losses and knows what's going on. So, we've been able to control those from that standpoint, too.
Any other general questions? Okay, I entertain motion to go in closed session.
Second.
Motion second go closed session, percent six ten oh two one sub three to deal with personnel issues. Call roll, please, Barry. Yes?
Yes.
I roll call the motion carries. We'll go into closed session. Now, why don't we just take a couple second breaks, shut the doors here?
Yeah, do we need a motion to go use a restroom? Want some coffee? Would you guys like some coffee?